Detroit Lakes City Council has called an order. At this time, I would like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in reciting the flag. And so we're here.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item in the agenda is the regular agenda this evening. I would entertain a motion from the council for approval of the regular agenda. So move. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the regular agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the motion, carries. Excuse my voice, I had a medical procedure. I'm trying to make it through the meeting. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there any items that need to be added or removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to have item six K moved to the regular to order.
Oh, the consent agenda. Any other items from the council? With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with removal of item six K. So move. Motion has been made, seconded to approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 11th, 2024 before the council. Has anyone in the audience or any member of the council wish to make any changes or adjustments to the minutes? Hearing now, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting from June 11th, 2024. So move. Motion has been made, seconded to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting held June 11th. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Amanda Quong is here this evening from West Central Initiative. She'd like to present the annual update. Welcome, Amanda.
Thanks for having me. I'm Amanda Quong. I'm the grants officer at West Central Initiative. Still relatively new. I started with West Central Initiative in December, right before the holidays. So most of you may be familiar with West Central Initiative, but we are here just to kind of give an update and then see if you have any questions or concerns for us. So I brought a folder for all of the council members. So I'll kind of go through what's in the folder and then just touch a little bit on Becker County and what's going on with West Central Initiative and specifically with Detroit Lakes. So looking at your folder, you have a little handout about Becker County. Also below that is the ripples of goods. So that's our 2023 annual review. If you're not familiar with West Central Initiative, that's really good summary of our work. It's an entire book, so we do a whole lot being a community foundation and also our economic development organization for this region. And on the left-hand side of your packet, we have a little bit about different programming that we have this year. So we have a one pager on our loan program. So those are mostly small business loans. We help with gap funding, so access to capital. And we also have our childcare loans. So just a little bit about that. And if you have any questions, Greg Wagner would probably be the person to contact. We also have a little bit about our democracy program. So we have a run for rural, which is just a one-and-a-half-day leadership training. So I like to bring this up at city council meetings because if you are looking for new city council members or you maybe have some people in mind that could use a little boost to get involved in civic leadership, that would be a great program. We also have the rural advocacy and public leadership program. So that's a little bit more in-depth, and that's a six-month leadership program. So that would also be a good option for folks that you may want to help get involved. And then we also have Going Local and Lead Local, which are more shorter workshops. And Lead Local is specifically for networking and making connections. Those programs are done by Celeste, who is from Detroit Lakes. She's local. And we also have just a one pager on our climate action plan. So a little bit of information on that and some ideas of ways that you can make a difference. So definitely check that out. And we have two climate officers now. So Cedar's contact information is on the back if you want to connect with her. And we also have another new climate officer named Griffin. We have a Start a Ripple pamphlet here. So this is about our campaign that we're kicking off. We've had our Start a Ripple events throughout the counties. The Becker County Start a Ripple event was just last week. And we have just a little handout about our regional development organization. So that's kind of more of the regional development work that we do. So just a little bit of information. Of course, all of this is on the website, too, so you can dig a little deeper on there. So kind of focusing on Becker County. Since 1986, when West Central Initiative was founded, we've had over five million grants come into Becker County and 4.3 million in loans. We also have a lot of component funds. So those are funds and donor advice funds that individuals or organizations have set up with West Central Initiative. So Becker County is really active in that area with 7.7 million in assets. So a total of 10.2 million of loans and grants that have come into Becker County over the years. And then those, some of those active component funds are listed there. We also have some of the projects that West Central Initiative has assisted with in Becker County. And we also try to have a board member from each county. So Jackie's on our board. She's actually the board chair currently. So it's great to have her. And we also have Jacob, who is representing White Earth Nation on our board. So kind of just to cover a few things going on in Detroit Lakes. As far as numbers go, like I mentioned, the community funds are really active, which is great. So just from July 2023 to June 30th of this year, so pretty much one year, we've had 1.357 million in grants, you know, from the community foundations distributed here in Detroit Lakes. Some early childhood initiative funds have come in. We also have the Main Street Revitalization Grants. That's just under 75,000. And this is fresh off the press, our West Central Initiative grants. The press is actually tomorrow, the press release, so a little early. Of the 46 grants that we have going out to nonprofits in our region, four of those are to organizations here in Detroit Lakes. And that's just under 44,000. So really nice to see those funds coming into Detroit Lakes and supporting some really great nonprofits. So all in total, it's just over 1.4 million in grants coming in just this past year. So those are kind of the things I wanted to touch on, but open to questions. Oh, I did notice I missed one thing in the booklet. We also have a local grant that's for technical assistance. So it's for municipalities. So if Detroit Lakes was interested in renewable energy, you could apply or contact Cedar and receive technical assistance on applying for grants. So you're not getting grant funding necessarily through West Central Initiative, but more the support to help find grants and apply for those. So that could be state, federal, or from other nonprofits. So I think that's all I have, but open to questions or comments, anything that's going on?
Amanda, you did a great job. But I've been wrong for the 40 years that West Central has been, and they're such an important factor for our part of the state. And you represent over 250,000 people. But the big deal is that you're in nine counties and also part of White Earth. And some of the big factors over the 40 years, I took down some notes when we had the meeting here last week over Carmen. You've given out $70 billion in grants in the last 40 years. You've given out $59 million in loans. You've created over 9,000 new jobs. And then you also have $299 million in loan dollars leverage. So your impact on our area has been huge. And I'm just wondering what we would have done if we hadn't had all that extra support. So your group, having the 40th year anniversary here, you've done a great job of representing all of us. And I, as I said at that meeting, that if communities don't have West Central Initiative in their toolbox, they're missing out on a lot of programs that they could have to help their communities. And you've done a great job on that, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Further questions or comments, Jackie?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. As chair of this, chair of this West Central Board, I've had the opportunity to learn a lot more. And I would just encourage people to learn a lot more about West Central via the website. They have a number of different newsletters that you can subscribe to because there are new things always, always happening in our communities that would be important for our, for our council and our communities to know about. So I would encourage that as well.
Any further questions or comments? Amanda, thank you for coming this evening. I appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you. And if you have any questions that come up later, my card is in the folder. I'd be happy to chat with you. Thank you so much.
At this time, on adjourn the regular reading, a call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed ordinance 525, an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting the operation of cannabis business in the city of Detroit Lakes. And a call on city staff to introduce that to the council, if you would, Kelsey?
Mayor, council, I'll start with that. The cannabis statute that was adopted last year allows local governments to adopt kind of reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of cannabis business operations. So a lot of cities are looking at doing that through their zoning ordinance. So for example, we could adopt regulations on, you know, what zoning districts we want to allow cannabis cultivation, like industrial districts. We can also consider where we want to allow cannabis retail businesses to be located, for example, in commercial districts. Also, different times of operation are things that are allowed in the statute. So we've been waiting kind of all year for the state to put out some model ordinances, which they did just a couple of weeks ago. The problem is, why we're looking at doing a moratorium, like in the first reading tonight, is this last legislative session, the legislature decided to speed up the process a little bit. Originally, none of the licenses were supposed to be approved until January 1st, 2025. This last bill from, this last legislative session allows pre-application process for the social equity applicants to actually begin taking applications later this month. July 24th is the start of that application process. And then actually with those approved social equity applicants, there is a possibility they could even begin cultivation yet this year, even though retail sales couldn't start until 2025. So that, the statute that's in place does allow local governments to put a moratorium in place until January 1st, 2025. So basically, what we're doing is exercising that option to put a moratorium in place over the next six months till January 1st, 2025, to buy us time to basically put our zoning ordinance and other restrictions in place. Because part of that pre-application process, applicants have to verify zoning with the jurisdiction that they want to go. So before we start meeting calls about what is allowed in the city of Detroit Lakes, we want to have those rules in place. So I'm gonna look to Charlie, see if he has anything to add.
The only I would add is, is that just because it gives us until the 1st of 2025 doesn't mean that we need to take all of that time. If we have our ordinance amendments in place, there's nothing that says that we couldn't rescind the moratorium after that's done. What we were committed to.
Okay. Any further questions from the council or comments?
Mayor, I just add, so again, we have to have a public hearing, and there's a first reading, and then we're looking at doing the second reading on a special council meeting on July 19th.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to ask a question or make a comment about the proposed interim ordinance regarding cannabis businesses? Hearing now, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion from the council. So move. Motion has been made and seconded to give first reading to ordinance 525, an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting the operation of cannabis business in the city of Detroit Lakes. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First reading is given to ordinance 525. At this time, we'll call to order a public hearing to give consideration to the establishment of redevelopment project number 43, the redevelopment plan and establishment of tax increment financing district 43-1. And I don't know, is Makela here yet? Are you Makela?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna first have Larry maybe preface this a little bit, then I'll call on Makela.
This project is for quality equipment. It's a Kubota dealership that will go on Highway 10 East. It's in the location where the old swinging doors was located, where that was burned out decades ago. So we're going to redevelop that site. They will create seven to 12 new jobs, and they will invest about $4 million in our community.
Okay, thanks, Larry. With that, I would call on Makela Hewitt from Baker Tilly. Do you want to come on up? Welcome to Detroit Lakes.
Technical problems, I'm on now.
I was gonna say, weren't very...
Thank you. Oh, sorry. We're gonna try their new technology here and see if it works.
It's working good.
Great facility. Makela Hewitt with Baker Tilly. Thanks for having me here. I did prepare a brief presentation with an overview of tax increment financing as a tool, the project, and the structure of the tax increment assistance.
It's not on the list, but it's not on enough, just see.
Sorry.
There we go.
So again, just an overview of the presentation, the project summary, and the request for tax increment assistance, the fundamentals of tax increment financing, financing options for which tax increment dollars are typically used, the financial TIF plan, review and analysis, and the next steps with the approval process. So the city did receive an application for tax increment financing assistance from QF5 LLC in conjunction with redevelopment of the existing substandard buildings that were reviewed and determined to be substandard for the redevelopment qualifications of the tax increment financing district. They are proposing an approximate 15,000 square foot new building with construction expected to start mid- to late in 2024. The request for tax increment assistance from the city was in, is structured as two ways, and we'll go into detail on the financing options. The first is to finance site development costs of approximately $623,570. And those are, that would be financed through pay-as-you-go, meaning the developer would finance those costs with private financing and then would receive reimbursement for those costs in the future years of tax increment collection. There are also additional infrastructure improvements that are just under 400,000 that are related to the redevelopment of this project site. And the structure of those would be financed by the city, and then a percentage of the increment would be retained by the city to repay that cost. So tax increment financing is a tool that's commonly used by communities to facilitate development and redevelopment projects. It is a method of capturing the tax-based growth that results from a new development or redevelopment project. There's a fixed number of years for the capturing of the tax-based growth. And then the new development capacity that's been created by that project is added to the existing tax base for all the taxing entities. The tax increment revenues are generated by the increased property value that is created when that property is redeveloped. Here's an illustration showing the existing land and building value at the bottom. That's today's value of the property. The taxes that are generated by the existing taxes continue to go to city, county, and school districts. So there's nothing that's taken away from the current taxes of the property itself. Once that new building is constructed, the taxes that are generated by that new building are captured by the tax increment district for up to the term of the district to finance the obligations for which the purpose of the tax increment district was created. There are several different types of tax increment districts that can be created. I've got five listed here. And some of these districts are based on the current condition of the property, and some are based on the end uses. The focus of the project tonight is redevelopment district, where it's really to remove substandard, underutilized properties. And the maximum term is 25 years. There's also a current condition, substandard, one referred to as renewal and renovation, that is generally less contaminated or plated, and that's a reduced term of 15 years. And there's also a soils condition, which is for contaminated, polluted soils with a term of 20 years. The last two, the housing districts and the economic development, those are based on what is being developed on the site, with the housing being for low and moderate income housing with a maximum 25-year term. And then lastly, an economic development district, which is for manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, industrial-type development with a term of eight years. Again, we're looking at the redevelopment district based on the current status of the property, removing the substandard buildings, and then the construction of a new facility on the site. There are only certain types of costs that can be financed with tax increment. You'll see listed here. It's typically the costs prior to vertical construction, so it could include public improvements, acquisition, soil corrections, site grading, demolition, or site preparation, and then some of the costs, the costs related to those capital expenditures. It's important to note that you cannot use tax increment on certain improvements that are governmental or recreational facilities. So that would include city hall, public safety, or public works, or cultured recreational facilities such as parks, community centers, or golf courses. When you create a tax increment district, you have the small building in this little circle. Each individual tax increment district is where the development or redevelopment occurs, and it's where the tax increment dollars are being generated. There are a portion of those dollars that can be spent outside of the individual TIF district on the larger project area, and that's referred to as PIB. The size of your project area can be the same as your tax increment district, or it can be larger, as you see in the illustration here. When you're creating a tax increment district, it is, again, for a specific purpose and project for which you're facilitating the development or redevelopment for. Prior to creating that tax increment district, you do have a TIF plan that is adopted. That TIF plan includes the budget of the projected revenues and estimated public costs of the project, includes a geographic boundary for which the tax increment district is being created within, and then the public purpose for which that project's being created. The final steps include a public hearing, which is what is being asked of the council tonight, and that is to consider the establishment of the tax increment plan in the tax increment district. And then the final step would be certification of the district by the county, that is a request that the city makes to the county to certify the district. Here is a summary from the tax increment plan of the budget. It includes the total estimated public costs of the project. See listed here, we've got for site improvements, preparation costs of $907,000, other public improvements of $725,000. Administrative expenses cannot exceed more than 10% of your total budget. So the total estimated public costs are about $1.8 million. And the projected tax increment revenues that would be generated by that new development over the 26 years are $1.8 million. I talked about financing options. The two primary ways that you see tax increment dollars being used. The first is pay-as-you-go. And again, this is where the project is financed by the developer upfront through private equity and debt or other sources. Upon completion of the project and incurring of the cost for which the city's agreed to reimburse the developer, there would be a TIF note that's issued. And then the developer would be reimbursed over time to the extent that there is available increment to repay that initial pay-as-you-go obligation. With upfront financing, this is typically where the city would finance a portion of the costs upfront, and that could be either done through an interfund loan or through the issuance of bonds. And with upfront financing, the city is relying upon the future tax increment revenues to repay the obligation, whether it's interfund loan or bond debt service. So with this structure, with the projected tax increment from the previous budget of $1.8 million, the structure of the TIF between the city and the developer would be that the city would retain 50% of the annual increment generated by the project to repay the interfund loan for the road improvements of just under 400,000 at 5% interest. The remitted 50% would be pledged to the developer to repay for the site improvements of the $623,000. So the way the structure is of that, it would allow the city to repay for the road improvements adjacent to the site as well as to offset the site improvement costs as necessary for the project to proceed. Here's a summary of the sources and uses from the developer's project. You'll see it is about a $3.9 million project comprising of acquisitions, site development, building construction costs, and then other fees related to the project. Financing for the project would be debt of $3.2 million equity. You'll see the TIF of the $623,000. Because the TIF would be as pay-as-you-go, the developer would be responsible for financing that $623,570 upfront and then would use the tax increment to repay that obligation. So the impacts of TIF as a tool, the purpose of it is to redirect the future capture tax increment dollars to meet the defined public purpose. In this case, it's the removal of the substandard buildings and underutilized properties through the creation of a tax increment district and new facility that would be constructed there. The purpose of it is to assist projects that would otherwise not occur and thus meets the but-for test. And once the project and the obligations have been fulfilled, that new captured tax base is added to the tax base of the city, the county, and the school as a whole. So it can be viewed as a long-term investment of future growth for the city. The last illustration I have is showing the dark green area. This is the current value in taxes that are generated prior to creation of the district, over the life of that district. That base value remains at that. The gray shaded area, these are the incremental taxes that are generated by the new project. They're captured by the tax increment district to pay for the TIF-eligible improvements for the TIF plan. The last year of the district, when it's decertified, the new higher tax value and base is added to the other, to all the taxing entities, general tax base. And that's where you start to see that tax-based growth following the capturing of the tax base through the term of the district. Here's the why of why cities use tax increment financing. First and foremost, it's to stimulate development that otherwise would not occur, and that's meeting the but-for test. It's also to encourage the development of uses that you would otherwise maybe not see in your community, whether in certain types of development or certain areas of development. It's to enhance and diversify your tax base as well as facilitating infrastructure and other public improvements within your community. When we're reviewing the tax increment plan and considering approval, there are findings that are met. The first is that the TIF plan will afford maximum opportunity consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole for private, or for development by private enterprise, that the TIF plan conforms to general plans for development of the city as a whole. The planning commission did review the TIF plan to assist with reviewing the development plans of the project site, that the project would qualify as a redevelopment district. And as I described earlier, there are specific criteria for each type of district that's being created or considered. And that the proposed development, in the opinion of the city, would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment within a reasonably foreseeable future. And this is the but-for test again. And the last one is that the increased market value of the property to be developed is created with tax increment financing and if no public assistance is provided. And this test is also important to understand that something may happen on that site at some point in the future, but you're trying to maximize what may occur on that site with the use of the tax increment dollars that are offsetting a portion of the extraordinary costs that are essentially the barriers for that project to occur. So again, redevelopment districts, the, looking at the 70% of the area are occupied by structures. More than 50% of the buildings are substandard. And to be occupied, at least 50% of the area is covered by some type of structure. Schedule and next steps. When a tax increment request is submitted to the city, there is a process that is followed. It is about a 60-day process that includes drafting of the TIF plan. There is a notice to the county, both the county commissioner and as well as the county auditor and school district. There are hearing notices published in advance of the public hearing. The development authority met on July 2nd to consider... Uh, the development authority met on July second, um, to consider and, uh, the, uh, the tax increment plan. Tonight is city council consideration, uh, holding a public hearing consideration for approval. And then the next steps, um, uh, following, um, approval of the district would be reviewing consideration of a TIF agreement. Um, which, uh, we don't have the date, but that would be a future time. And the TIF agreement really contains the terms that I discussed about the pays you go and the interfund loan, um, all the terms of, of the developer. You require to, with the city would be required to pursuant to receiving the tax increment, um, assistance. So that's my formal presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or open up to the public.
Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that has any questions? Or of Larry? Anyone that has any comments regarding the TIF district?
Sir, you said, how long did you expect this one to be?
Mayor, members of the council, the maximum term of a redevelopment district is twenty-six years, twenty-five years after receiving a first increment. Um, the, the TIF plan is structured to, um, allow for the full twenty-six years of collection. But subject to what the annual, um, inflationary growth of the values would be, we might expect it to be lesser than. Uh, we are showing some surplus increment that could be lesser than twenty-six years. But I don't know if, if that would come to fruition. So the expectations could be up to twenty-six years with the goal of closing it earlier, once the obligations have been fulfilled. And if the future values, um, increase at a rate greater than what's projected.
Any further questions? Hearing none, thank you, Michaela. If that public hearing is closed, then I would entertain a motion from the council. Motion has been made, seconded to establish redevelopment project number forty-three. Redevelopment plan establishment of tax increment financing district forty-three dash one, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion, curious. Matt, if I could jump around a little bit on the community development.
Yes, sir.
Would you do, I believe there's a gentleman here for item five F, I think.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound right?
Yes.
Are you Jim?
I am.
Yeah, will you take that on, Matt?
Sure. Uh, item five F, consideration of resolution approving a variance to allow an addition to home with less than seventy-five foot setback. And a variance to allow thirty point eight pervertious surface coverage to allow an addition to home and construction of an accessory building in fifteen fifty-four East Shore Drive. Uh, this was discussed last night at CDC. Uh, this had unanimous approval. We thought it was a great plan, get this done and improve this. Uh, it keeps all the natural landscaping with water flows, everything like that. Planning commission, uh, reviewed this and had unanimous approval there. Uh, so I move this forward.
Second. Motion has been made, seconded to approve a variance. It was outlined by Alderman Bokey at fifteen fifty-four East Shore Drive, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion, curious. And now, Matt, would you go to item five B?
Five B, consideration of second reading adoption of ordinance five twenty-three for the annexation of seventy-eight point six seven acres tract land, more or less at thirteen nine six ninety-eight, two seventieth Avenue, Detroit Lakes. Uh, Becker County, Lakeview Township, and consideration of zoning such tract land R eight agricultural district. Uh, this was brought up last night at CDC. This is discussed many times over. Um, I would like to move to give a second reading to ordinance five twenty-three for the annexation of seventy-eight point six eight acres tract land, more or less thirteen six ninety-eight, two seventieth Avenue, Detroit Lakes. In Becker County, Lakeview Township and zone such tract of land R eight agricultural residence and RM multifamily residence, uh, district, uh, as requested by the developer on this. A couple of reasons I feel this is the annexation of land is critical to accommodate growth and future development of the city. The city is in need of additional housing options, additional multifamily, the combination of low, uh, density and high density multifamily housing. In this annex area is an opportunity to address that shortage. And the developer proposes it to develop both low density and multifamily housing. The dev- developer should have latitude to determine how best meets the city's needs. Uh, annexation zoning, uh, this property is requested developer and is consistent with our city's twenty twenty comprehensive plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded to give a second reading and adopt ordinance five twenty-three, uh, as outlined by Alderman Bokey. I know there are a number of folks here from the neighborhood. If any of you would like to make any comments, this would be the appropriate time to do so. And if you would come to the microphone, please. And state your name and state your address.
I'm getting good at it.
You know the drill.
My name is Jay Hanson. I live at twenty-one eleven, uh, two hundred seventieth Avenue. My wife and I are a percent or two. Um, Ron and Wendy were here to last meeting today, so I'll go through my broken record again. But, um, I live directly across from your proposed RM portion of the property. And, um, they want to put up a sixty-foot tall, uh, apartment building. And then I guess the plan is to build houses on the other side of it. Um, I don't see that as fitting in the neighborhood. And I'm thinking, if I want to build a house on the opposite side of a sixty-foot tall building. So I'm asking that, um, would you prefer it to be R two? But if you could zone it as, um, R four and reduce the height of the, of the apartment. So I, I know everybody has said that we need apartment buildings. I would really rather see it put on the west side of the property. The west side of the property is wide open, it butts nothing. There's deer and, and, uh, coyotes over there, that's it. And so there's plenty of room. If you went, uh, the DL boat access, I don't know if any of you, I'm sure most of you can buy there. But if you go to the DL boat access and you take a hard right instead of going left into the boat access. The woods there carry you straight around behind Shot Siders Shop, which is the only business on that end, other than Longbridge. And if anything built back there would be hidden from anybody. If you wanted to put sixty-foot tall buildings back there, you could. And it's not going to affect anyone. I'd also like to bring to your attention, Matt was nice enough to reach out to me after the last meeting. We talked a little bit and one of the things he brought up is it's your job kind of to look at the future too of the future Detroit Lakes. And what's going to be ten and twenty years down the road? And when I probably won't be at two hundred and seventieth, maybe I will. But if I'm not, and as the building continues to go on to the south, there's only a couple of places for it to go. And to the, directly to the west of Garrett's property is a forty-seven acre plat. That's right, right next to it, just a little bit of swamp in between. Uh, that's for sale. To the south of his property, directly attached to it, is a hundred and fifteen acres that's currently for sale, J boat acre. So that's the natural progress of how things are going to be going. Would be from the DL boat access and straight out to one thirtieth. And then on the other side, one thirtieth is the grand prize. Eventually, uh, Schlotterhaus Farm, there's five hundred acres there, we could go to another town if you wanted to. But that's where I think any sixty-foot tall buildings should go. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Does anyone else like to make any comments? I know we've heard some of these, but we did have a couple of council members that were not in attendance last month. Are you the lady that read that letter last time?
I did, yes.
Try to be nicer, okay?
It wasn't my letter, but I don't, I can't promise that.
I don't think we need to be calling people's names though, if that's possible.
All right. Um, Amber Abraham, um, I live at six forty-one South Tor- Shore Drive. I've been here multiple times. At the last meeting, I started my speech with, I know how this is going to go, but I'm not the type to say, just not say anything. And while we all saw how it went, so maybe this will be a surprise tonight too. We've been fighting against commercialization of our neighborhood since, I believe it's December of twenty twenty-two. Apartment buildings are commercial, they are a business. We have signed petitions, attended, attended planning meetings, countless city council meetings. We're still not being heard by certain members of the council. And the developer doesn't even attend most meetings. And I know there's not a lot of us here tonight, but I want you to think back of all the people that have been here. To say we do not want commercial in our neighborhood. There have been petitions signed by literally hundreds of people. It's not just who's here tonight, I think people are getting sick of doing this, quite frankly. I was at the CDC meeting last night and the lottery engineer stated that the plan is to build the apartments first. And next is commercial residential on that corner. The plan is then to phase it as stated into single homes. I don't know if you would buy there, but evidently you feel someone will. The potential layout shows how he disrespects our current neighborhood. There are with, there are residents willing to compromise for smaller multi-living buildings and you have here will not compromise. He doesn't care. He is the worst type of developer to have in your neighborhood. He has proven he cannot be trusted and he has zero idea how to develop. He has been throwing out ideas to see what sticks. And worse of all, we have council members following him around scared he's going to leave. At the CDC meeting last night, I listened to a gentleman give a presentation against twin homes in his neighborhood. There are meeting minutes of residents around Randolph speaking against apartments in their neighborhood, the apartments on South Shore. And all three are moving forward regardless of how the residents feel. We need to pay attention to all our councils voting. Who do they support? Do they listen to you or do they listen to react? Do they treat you with respect? It is a voting year. We need to pay attention and vote accordingly, otherwise it will never change. We need a representative that lives on South Side of the lake. Our current representatives do not live in our neighborhood and I believe they do not care because of that. We are an experiment for the city. And as a neighborhood, we are the ones that will deal with the traffic, the light pollution, safety, crime and the resale of our properties. We need someone that understands this is not a business. This is a neighborhood first, we should remain a neighborhood. I'm going to do my safety plug as I did last time. We have our truck parked on the shoulder of South Shore in front of our home and it was rear-ended by a distracted driver. So I want you all to think, what, what is that a person? You know, that car was totaled. You need to start looking before you start pumping traffic over for an apartment building of a hundred and fifty people. How are you going to separate the people from the traffic? Not only is that an issue, I don't know if anyone made it out there over fourth of July, just to see how our neighborhood is at anyone. It's nuts, isn't it? There's bikers, there's, I mean, there's people everywhere. It's a wonderful community for that. People love the outdoors, they're great. There's a side by sides, I mean, I've given the speech a hundred times and nothing has been done. So not only is that a problem, I mean, there's like little kids going fishing, man, I just hate to see something bad happen. That's a problem. I would review traffic calming measures. They're actually fairly inexpensive just to slow the traffic coming around in that field there. It is wild all the time. And I'm sure your engineer can look into that or help you look into me- measures that are inexpensive just to help calm the traffic. And I'm not talking to signs that work only half the time. I put some thought into it. Just as a neighborhood, I think we would appreciate that. Was that nice enough for you, Mr. Mayor?
Borderline, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else that want, wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Grammer. I have a home on Lake Dunes and, uh, one one two five three, uh, State U N S code. I'm here just representing the developer. So not Mr. Garrett, but the people that plan on doing the development on the land. Um, that is, uh, one of the developers, the partners in the development, has done a lot of developments in Detroit Lakes, Brent Keen. Uh, he's done Lordy Flash, King Lee Plaza. I don't think he, he's done quite a few, uh, midtown developments, phone book apartments, downtown crossing. So he's not, he was born and raised in Detroit Lakes, he's not, and, uh, someone who doesn't care about the community. Um, I'm originally from Moorhead, but I kind of live here. As an empty nester, my kids are, have triplets that are attending the University of Nebraska this fall, so, um, from zero, from three to zero, just like that. So I'm here to answer any questions. Um, maybe it would be helpful to kind of hear the kind of developments that we do. I don't know if that would be helpful, but, um, they're very high-end and, uh, this is going to be a very high-end development. And, um, for empty nesters and young professionals that are seeking a, a lifestyle, a lake lifestyle, but can't afford the down payment the current interest rate environment or, and so they want to be close to the lake, but they want to be a part of the community. And they don't, I mean, I heard some issues about traffic and things like that. Uh, we don't have, uh, we have a building in Moorhead, for example. There's no traffic issues, there's not, there's no parking issues. There's a, this is going to be a facility with indoor parking, underground parking, either indoor or underground, um, which is also indoor. Um, it's going to be spread out with gardens and walkways and nature trails and, uh, things that the neighborhood could probably wouldn't want to use themselves. So, and I don't know if you're like, there's like, I mean, go ahead and ask questions, I guess. I don't know what you guys want to know or what you hope to know at this point.
Is there questions from the council?
Well, I've got a question. Uh, you mentioned you live on Lake. Can you imagine that you had a lot of land next door and all of a sudden this building is going to be next door to you? How would you feel?
I wouldn't feel bad at all. I mean, it's, the one you have in Moorhead, I thought it would be moving in there now that my kids are beginning to downsize. And, uh, it's a, surrounded by residential neighborhoods. It's the only apartment complex surrounded by all residential neighborhood. And never heard a complaint from any of the residents. And in fact, the new development next to our apartment complex is a new single-family home development and they're selling lots. So this isn't like they were already there, they're buying lots, knowing that the apartment's there. That's all nice it is. You can't tell us an apartment, it looks like a home, the way that the architecture is, the way that we develop them. I mean, it's not like, it's not like, uh, and I don't want to disparage anyone, so I'm not going to give examples. But, um, it's not what you're thinking as far as a big apartment complex.
They're sixty feet.
Do you have schematics or anything to show us? I wasn't here last week, but did you have pictures of what this building looked like?
Um, I would have the, I would hate to show you like anything in preliminary stages, but, um, yeah, we, we're going through all of that, that process right now. It's hard to spend all the money on the, on all that stuff until you know that the zoning's been approved. So, um, we spent quite a bit of money on preliminary plans with architects. And I think maybe architect is here, uh, but they were here the last meeting. But, um, yeah, so we don't have anything to show at this point because we have to finalize some things once we know what the zoning is.
Any further questions, Matt?
Two comments, Mr. Graham. One, I appreciate you showing up, I wish you would have been here six months ago. Um, one question is, who's with this is, is you can tell the neighborhood is very sensitive and this is a big issue for all of us. If this does go through, would you consider moving the building to the far west of this development? Would you at least take that into consideration?
Well, when we, we don't control that. We don't own the development. We just, uh, we just have the, what they're willing to sell us.
Correct.
And so they've never proposed that to us.
No, and you understand, but if the purchase agreement goes through, you know, and it is zoned RM, would you?
Well, I mean, our purchase is only for ten acres of grass, yeah, so it wouldn't be, we couldn't move up.
But I'm saying the west edge of the property would willing to purchase.
I don't even know, I don't think we decided exactly where we're going to have to build.
So you, so you considered those, what I meant.
We considered that, we, we, the neighbors, I mean, we, we really, um, I mean, I don't, I just got involved, six months ago, I wasn't involved. So that must have been Mr. Garrett when he was doing something.
Gotcha, okay.
So I, so I was just, I just got involved in it.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, that's my, second question on this is looking at traffic, because I know that's a large concern.
Yeah.
And if this does go through, is this something that I feel strongly that we need to look at traffic in that area? Whether that's parking nodes or our city engineer probably has a list of ideas that may or may not work. Is that something that you as a developer of this property would be willing to sit down at the table?
Absolutely.
And discuss and work through to find solutions that work for it?
Absolutely. The city staff and the L is very easy to work with and, um, we, we like to work with them. So whatever we need to do, we work with them, it's, it's fine.
Thank you.
Can I, can I?
Go ahead, Jackie.
So, Matt, you made the motion to do RA and RM, but not designate where the RM is at this time.
The RM designation will go back to the developer's request, yes.
So that would be on the east?
That would be off two seventieth, yes.
Uh, off the east side, but you're saying you would consider? Off the east side, but you're saying you would consider moving that apartment?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's already these things that we have to consider because of the, you know, the, how close the development is to the lake, you know? And so we have to, there's something we have to mitigate there. So yeah, we're not anywhere near a final plan and we're still, we're still trying to figure out how to mitigate some of those things and the best way to do it. Part of the reason why you have, in today's environment, you have to go higher is it's just outrageous and costly now with the inflation that's happened over the last five years. So if you want, if anyone wants apartments, even in Fargo, Morehead, they're going higher now because you can't afford to go wider. So you have to figure out what's needed with DL. If you've got some terrain, there's not much terrain in Morehead. It's flat. So you can, you can, like, use some of the terrain to hide some of the height of the buildings, which is what we're trying to do with these planned architects. So again, I think you hear it and I totally understand, like, if I lived somewhere and I heard this development's coming, I would be concerned and not knowing the developers, I would be concerned. And so like I said, now that I'm involved in the process, I used to be on the Morehead City Council, Morehead Funding Commission. So I would definitely like to make it, get input from everybody and try to make it so that we're a big neighbor solve the need DL has with having more apartments and frankly, giving people that wouldn't otherwise have access to the a lake place, the opportunity to do it. I mean, right now, we didn't afford to have a lake place. If I would've bought my lake place fifteen years ago, I would, so.
And, and the developer wouldn't consider the R four, which will be three stories instead of four?
We tried. We, we found out kind of preliminary, we did, we did preliminary plans trying to see how to make it work with the, you know, with less floors. It just, all the bids we got back were crazy high costs and the only way to make it feasible was to go up one more floor.
True. More questions, Jackie?
No, I, I, I mean, it, this is a tough decision because we do need housing. We definitely know we need housing and not everybody can afford that down payment for a home. So they have to start in an apartment or they might, might want to downsize and go to an apartment, which opens up housing for other people. So this is not an easy decision. I, I would be more comfortable with an R four than an RM, but we have to deal with the motion on the table.
I've got a question for Larry. How, how many acres does Garrett own totally there?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
How many acres does Garrett have in total in that area?
I've got seventy-eight point six seven.
Seventy-eight point six seven. Well, I, I have a little concern because you're, you're telling me that developer, he's concerned about his cost. So he's gotta put an extra floor so he can balance this out, so he can make a, make a decent profit off it. But at the same time, when you raise that up to the neighborhood, this concern is gonna happen with the values of their home. And, you know, you're saying that this developer is easy to work with and so forth. Why don't we get him to come in and have him, have a meeting, just the neighborhood out there and sit down with him and see what he can come up with on it?
I, I, well, yeah, I mean, I'm rep, when I say represent, I'm one of the partners. Now, I just got into the partnership. So I can definitely be with them. Definitely would love it.
Well, would you do that before we made a decision here tonight, so you can sit down and see what all those people feel like?
Well, the issue that we have is we can't, we have other opportunities and we have to get started. You know, the building's, building season around here is short. So we don't have a lot of time, but until we need to start spending money on things that we won't get back. There's no way to get the money back. We can't do that until this is approved. So what I would do is definitely be with the neighborhood. I mean, there's so many decisions we make. You can do stuff with landscaping to make it better. You could do stuff, and I'd be with, I would like to be with all that stuff because we want this to fit into the neighborhood and be really nice. So like, it, there's an upscale, like, the, the price point's gonna be like, you know, it's, it's more affordable than I want in the lake place, so if you wanna have, you know, have that, but it's not going to be, I mean, you just can't, I mean, the way that, the way that builds up that in order to make it so that it cash flows, the price point's probably gonna be a little bit higher than what you have in DL right now.
What is the rental rate, what do you think?
It's gonna vary. It just depends on the size of the units. Yeah, I'm sure it'll be like anywhere from like fifteen hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
There's your housing.
Affordable.
There's your housing.
Yeah.
See, we don't, we don't want to talk in the back now. Thank you.
I mean, in Morehead, as an example, you can, you can rent anything now that's, that's nice and this is gonna be for less than twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
You, you know, the question I have, because we know there's a shortage of housing, whether it's an apartment or single houses or duplexes, triplexes, but Marty Solomon out there, over the years, he's putting a very housing, very good housing area. And I'm just wondering why we couldn't go ahead and continue that example he's had. It's worked out well. And, you know, and it's pleasing to the neighborhood and also, but I'm also wondering, one of the things, it was on the screen with this lady talking about TIP dollars. We could do TIP dollars for, for building property and I've always thought that we've done TIP for everything else, but let's not have a lot of land. Maybe the city should be looking at buying that property up with TIP dollars and then get contractors in and sell off each, each of them by part of the pie to put in the property so they can have it anyway. But my concern is, you said it's gonna be great for the neighborhood and stuff, but how's it gonna look twenty-five, thirty years from now? Because I know how apartments look after they start aging a little bit. And that's, that's a concern. That's what he's concerned for the people here too. So I, I want housing, but I, I think if you, if you could listen to these people and help them, they're just asking a simple thing. Move it up a little bit further behind the trees. You wouldn't be as visible as what you planned on being. But you're working off these people's nice homes at the same time. That's why you picked that spot. You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be a nice neighborhood. You wanna help out your property too, but at the same time, you set the cost for the people that live there. That's, that's what, that's why I have trouble with it.
Yeah. I told you.
And you know where I'm coming from, because you said you, you wouldn't mind having this apartment by your lake home. Well, I guarantee the rest of the lake would buy it. And that's, that's the big part of it.
It's, it's, yeah, I don't know. I mean, everyone's different. I, all I know is like, we are very committed to DL now and in the future. And I think Mr. Keen has shown that with his investment in the community and and I love DL. By the way, this is really nice. I wish I would have a council chamber for this.
Turned out nice.
Yeah, it's really nice, yeah. But any other questions?
Further comments or questions? All right. Since this is probably gonna, thank you. Since this is probably gonna be a, oh, we're not over, please. Could you name, could you name your name and address, sir?
My name is Brad, six fifty South Shore Drive. Council members, mayor, sorry for my own words, but it's, it's been here before. I didn't get a notice for this time. I don't know why. If that was on purpose or not, but I've had them before. I just wanted to on record again, say, ask what everything that on the previous gentleman said, kinda, he kinda had the this recent gentleman, he kinda had it at the end, Joe. He said it looked like a home, that it was gonna be four stories or any four-story home to DL. So then I just knew again, you can't trust these guys and what they say. I'll just leave it at this again. I hate to bring it up, but like, this year, my family and I are gonna pay sixteen thousand dollars in property taxes, of which I know the city gets about half of that. And I just find it absolutely appalling that my council member and other council members and employees within the city department want to put a commercialization on my kitchen window. Thank you.
Hi, Margaret.
I'm Margaret Gunnison from five-six-four South Shore Drive. It's possible I've misunderstood, but I thought that last meeting, the motion that was approved was for RA zoning for the entire parcel and that that was what the first reading was for. And that after more particulars are available from the developer above the parcel and its development, then further rezoning, if necessary, would be considered. And I get the impression this evening that now RM and R four are being considered to be reinserted before the second reading. Am I misunderstanding?
That's what the motion is, Margaret.
So I, that doesn't seem proper to change the original reading's motion that was approved to the second reading, which will be different. That doesn't seem proper.
I'll call on the city attorney to comment on that.
I can see that I have my little charger and I tabbed it so that, because I kind of anticipated we did the question. So I'm reading from the city charter and specifically section three oh five, and I think it pertains to this. So it says, "An ordinance may not be amended after this first reading so as to change its original purpose." And so the short answer to that is, is that you can amend the ordinance at the second reading as long as you are not changing its original purpose. So I guess that depends on what you think the purpose of the ordinance is. You know, is it an ordinance for annexation? We're not changing that. This is specifically not an ordinance for zoning, although this ordinance does also include zoning. So I just leave it to say that that's the language of the charter and that's what we have to follow.
Thank you, Margaret.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Finneset. My wife and I live at six-two-two South Shore Drive. We're kitty-corner to this, this vacant lot and you know, we've been coming here to these meetings for two years. And I totally understand the frustration that the previous people have expressed and I can't believe that we're still talking about this. To make a, I mean, when you hear four stories, sixty-foot high, a hundred and fifty unit property, you kinda get a feel for what that is. This is an actual picture of what that looks like. This is the view in Fargo at N S U's student housing. It's a hundred and eighty units, little bit bigger, but it's essentially what we're talking about, throwing across the street from us. I defy anybody here to say, "Oh, I wouldn't have a problem with that going across the street from me." I'll pass it around. The Eventide proposal that came to the east shore a while back came with plans, studies. They laid out the traffic impact. They laid out everything for you guys. And four people spoke against it. Boom, that was out the door. And it guaranteed forty decent paying jobs. I don't know that they could afford fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month in rent working at Eventide. Maybe they could get by during that. Kinda doubt it. Where are the plans for this? Where are the studies saying, "Oh, Detroit needs, Detroit Lakes needs this much housing"? I haven't heard of a single study from you guys about any housing. I hear we need it, but where's the study? Where's the proposal about what this is gonna look like? Can we get a graphic artist to show us? I want to hear about, "Oh, the landscaping's gonna be nice." That really doesn't do anything for me when I'm looking at a four-story building and the traffic, really? Are you gonna, are you gonna tell me that there's gonna be no traffic impact? There's one road, South Shore Drive. And we're gonna put three hundred, four hundred people in that apartment building and it's not gonna impact our lives? Gotta be kidding me.
Just a point of correction. I know he's trying, what he's trying to illustrate, but that actually is a five-story building there.
Take the top building, top level off, that's thirty acres. The rest of it is a hundred and fifty units.
Some three acres.
Brad Erickson, twenty-one, three, two-hundred, Seventh Avenue. I'm Jay's neighbor. I was at the last meeting, was the proposal, someone council member here. I do want to correct some of the statements by the developer that spoke. There is an exact track of land identified to build on, so they do have plans on where it's gonna be. So what he said was not correct. I would disagree with that statement where he said they haven't identified where they're gonna build yet because if you looked at the last proposal, it is on now. There's nine point eight-six acres that was identified. That's right, right across from our property.
Yeah, just to clarify, I think the actual owner of the property is offering a certain spot for sale.
Correct. But that's identified though. I mean, which, that says it's exactly across from our market right now. So like Jay stated before and I said at the last meeting, we're not against annexation. We are requesting that the city feels and the developer feels that they would like to perceive this project, that they move it to the west, just like Jay said. There are plenty of acres to work with there. I realize that's the property that's offered, but the city thinks it's needed. Developers will do it. I feel there's other places in the property where that could go, not having a strict impact on the neighborhood that's there right now. Just like they said, way on the west side of that property, that for a lot of people, you wouldn't really see because of the way the landscape sits right there. I plead with you, like, if this thing goes through on how this is gonna impact us, the value of our property, you can't tell me that's gonna go down. I mean, I don't know anybody that would want to purposely buy a property right across from apartment building. You know, that wasn't already there. It's different if it's already there, right? But if I was to sell my property, because this is gonna happen, and somebody finds out about that, how am I gonna sell? My cool buyers, I talked to three realtors, said my property, that it's gonna drop. And if this goes through, we feel like they have to move. I shouldn't be, feel like I have to do that because of what's gonna happen. That's just not right. I have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with annexation. I know the city needs to grow. However, two thousand dollar rent is not affordable housing. I will also state, I have a two-seventy right next to where this is proposed. I don't consider that I live on the lake. I don't live on the lake. I drive by the lake. If he's saying people are gonna buy this because they think they're gonna live on the lake or feel like they're on the lake, I disagree with that statement. I don't understand how that would be appealing to somebody to pay back on their rent for the apartment that's by the lake. I mean, you have access to it, just like anybody else, yes, but you don't live on the lake. So like I said, I just, if you guys feel this needs to go through, ask me, and you really consider moving the location, or I'd much rather prefer the R two or R four designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Which one of you is gonna speak?
Both of us.
Okay.
I'm Anna Carlson and this is Penelope.
Hi.
Penelope.
Hi.
And she wanted to explain to us why she would like to live in a place where there's proposing. Why would you like to live in a place? Tell me.
Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's near the lake and there's a playground nearby.
And there's lots of kids in the neighborhood around there for us to like to go to friends' houses and we need housing all around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, I think we've probably heard from everybody in the room almost all. I think we're a little quick unless there's more comments from the council or questions.
I've got some more comments. Well, we've been seeing here this representative that's a friend of Brett Keen's, says, "I'm here tonight. I'm a friend of Brett Keen's." Now, as we get into his, his pep talk, we find out, no, that he's also a partner. He didn't tell us that at first. He was just here as, as a friend of Mr. Keen's. But I, I personally don't think that we have enough information to even consider voting on this. And having a site plan is part of doing business and it's gonna be part of the cost of doing business, but that's what you need when you wanna put in a complex like this. And we need more information. We can't say, "Oh, you can, you can trust it." Well, you know what? Maybe we can't trust, but we don't know for sure. But it's too late after the building is built. And I think we need to have site plans. We need to know what's happening. And I think we need to look at the request of moving this thing further back so most of it is away from that regular housing. of it is away from the regular housing here, because these last two gentlemen talked, and after seeing a picture like this, maybe one story less, to me, it's way too much that I want to look out every morning and say, "Holy macro." And last night, we had the engineer, you know, from Mr. Garrett, and we talked to him about making changes. And he said, "Mr. Garrett wants RM housing, and he also wants to have neighborhood commercial property right off the bat, so we can see what's happening." And I just think that we're pushing this too far, and I, I, we've got a beautiful neighborhood out there. And I don't know why we want to go ahead and ruin the neighborhood so somebody can make a few bucks and then go away from it. I'm, I'm just concerned about neighborhoods and keeping people happy in the neighborhoods. And I just think we've got to, I think we're pushing this down the road too fast. It's, it's not good management for our city to have this, because it makes people think even more. As I said, everyone says we put in this business residential neighborhood. We've had people say to me, "Zeman, I would never build, I would never buy a house when there's land next to me or close to me, because I know what's going to happen in Detroit Lakes." If you could have a gas station, you could have this retail store, you could have whatever that they want to put in there, you've got no say. And I don't, I don't think that's right for the people to have that feeling in Detroit Lakes. We've got a great town, and we should let our zoning ruin the town. And I think that's where we're going right now, after hearing all of this tonight.
Okay, I think we've...
Actually, I have something that I'd like to say. Like, just a minute. I promise I will get to the point. I've thought a lot about this in the last several weeks. We've heard a lot from a lot of people. And I did a little search, and I found about fourteen apartments that were available in Detroit Lakes this afternoon, maybe a couple houses for rent. It seems like a really low inventory for our community, our size. It's trying to grow. It's trying to have good economic development. Even the Chambers Report from Grow Minnesota says that housing, or lack thereof, in Detroit Lakes would have bigger concerns to local businesses than childcare. And we talked about childcare a lot as well. I think about the comparison to Eventide, that was a different scenario. That was already zoned R2 already within the city, not an annexation request. I think about the RM zoning and the appropriateness of the RM zoning. Every RM zone in this community is right next to an R2 zone. I went through the GIS site this morning, and Larry, maybe there's one I didn't find, but every one I could find was right next to R2. This, this is what we have historically done. And so, it's not out of line. It's not different from what we've done. We, the traffic on that road is, the 2023 report was, was seventeen little, well, just under eighteen hundred cars per day, which gives it a level service, level of service of A according to our city engineer, out of A through D, D being lowest. The safety concerns? Yeah, we've heard many times about safety on South Shore Drive. That is an issue that we need to address, but it's separate from the annexation. It's an issue we need to address whether, whether there's an annexation or not, whether there's additional growth or not. It's something that we need to address. And we've listened to our residents over the past two years. We had, we did, we created, when we created the neighborhood commercial zone, we didn't include the gas station. We didn't add the neighborhood commercial zone to that original annexation request, even though it was requested by the developer, because we said that that was the thing we didn't want. And here we are, two years later, and he came back and he requested the RM without the commercial zone. So, we have been listening to our residents. And I think this is where I really struggle, because I hear, I hear what all of you are saying. And I think about the future and the growth of our community. And I think about those tracks of land that we can grow and do, Jay, like you mentioned. Like, what do we do? What do we do when, when we don't grow, when we don't expand? We need to really think about the, the future growth of the city as a whole. And I think that this fits with our comprehensive plan, fits with the needs of the community, and fits with what we need to do to keep growing as a community and meet the needs and the demands that are on us. And so, that's, that's why I would vote yes for this. Thank you.
All right. I happen to be an expert in apartment houses, because they're all over my neighborhood, behind Oakdale School, and those people, they didn't have a choice. They had nice twin homes in there, next to, you know, hit this apartments, more apartments, more apartments. No, they're not happy. They haven't been happy. And so, you say, people have, we've had a habit of putting all these, as us, we want R2. Now, we no longer have a two-mile zone to get property from. And like I said, we as a city may have to look at doing some of our land ourselves, because right now, the way it is, we're looking at this farmland that's going to go for whatever zoning they want to have put in. If we want to have one that could be business, could be, I'm hoping it's going to be housing. But, but right now, this whole thing with apartments, putting in nice residential homes, you know, this is, you started in Northside, now you're working over here, the whole town. And I just, I just can't believe that we're even thinking about this. And it's, it is bad planning and bad zoning to put these type of properties in with existing homes. And I can understand that it was a thousand acres, and somebody wants to come in and put an apartment in, and then people will build up next to it, which will never happen. And I say that, I understand that, but the only building spot I can see right now is off Tar Road that, well, Bismill has. But it just gets to be too much to, for these people, for mostly people, it's probably the biggest investment they have is these homes. And here we're going to come in and develop them. Take, take a market crash right now, what these houses are today, you see what they're going to be, and that's two or three years after this thing's built. You're going to have people going up, look at the house, and look across the street, and just keep on driving. But I, I, I wish we could slow this down and, and talk to developer and try to get something that could work out, and talk to these neighbors that would be pleased, pleasurable for, and plausible for everybody to come into, because that's what we need right now. We're, we're running this thing so fast without even giving them a, any chance to come in with a site that they need. But for a big operation, like these folks are, coming to say, "We can't make the site back to the cost money." Well, I'm sorry, I got to accept that answer.
Okay. Jay?
I think what's really upsetting here is the process in which this is occurring. I'm supportive of the annexation as agriculture, but I think that the process seems to be backwards. We are making a ten-acre zoning to RM to appease the landowner to be able to sell off ten acres to Mr. Keen and et cetera. I think that process is backwards. It feels to me like, you know, the city's so interested in having this land within the city limits and having control of the development, that the, the developers using this ten acres as R4 as kind of a leverage to get what he wants. And I think, I think coming in as, as an RA and then rezoning that ten acres, or coming to some compromise with the neighbor, neighbors as to where this RM will be is the right way to go, not allowing this ten acres as part of the deal as an RM. I think, I think there's been a lot of compromise with the neighbors as to, yeah, they like the R4, R3, et cetera, in different locations. But to me, it doesn't seem like there's been any kind of consideration or compromise by the developing people, the developers. And then yesterday, like Ron Zeman stated at the CDC meeting, now they're coming in saying, "Yeah, we're going to do that. We want to do, and we still have this plan, to do a community development or a neighborhood commercial district." So, all this is, is coming around again. Things that the neighbors have already said, we don't want. And how come we're willing to listen to other areas like East Shore, like we brought up last month? The same concerns that these current neighbors are worried about, traffic, light pollution, noise pollution. Those are all the same concerns that the East Shore residents had when Eventide wanted to bring in their property. Now, those, those concerns that these local people have are not an issue? Of course, they're an issue, and they should be considered. I just think there's no formal plan, like Ron stated, for this ten acres. And I think before we, before we rezone that ten acres to RM, I think we need to have some plans in hand and look at it. There needs to be some balance. This comprehensive development plan the city has, once again, it's not set in stone. It's a, it's a guide. It's a plan. And there needs to be some balance. There needs to be some compromises. Balance between city growth and the people living there already. There needs to be some compromise between the neighbors and the developers. Therefore, although, no, I think we bring it in as an RA, and if the developer wants to purchase land and rezone it at a later date, then bring in plans and we'll discuss it then.
Okay, well, I've, I've, I've got more things. Can I talk before Ron Zeman shows up, please?
Thanks again for showing up again. This is not something that's been happening under the cover of darkness. This is not something that's been happening. You have the high enclosed doors, this has been helping the open. This has made comments that it's, it's, you know my name, you know my address, and probably know your shoe size, too. But that's beside the point. This isn't, this isn't under the vacuum. We have been talking about this parcel. I remember sitting over there, meeting back in like 2016, when I first got on the council, and we had a conversation about what would happen if this parcel ever came into, into Detroit Lakes? What would we want to put in that area? Back then, I did represent this area. With the rezoning of, of redistricting, I got moved, so I don't represent you right now, but I do live basically in your neighborhood. I live right across the street from Longbridge, so I do know the area. I do run that road. I do ride my bike up and down that road. I roller ski that road. I do all sorts of activities down in that neighborhood. I do think this is something that we do need in that, that area. This isn't under the cover of darkness. This is something we've been talking about. We need something down there. We need an option. Ron, I know you're an expert on, on zone, zoning, and you're an expert on apartments, because they're all in more of one, but you can't tell us that we can't have apartments on the south side because you don't want them on the south side.
Well, I'm saying, Dan, it's, it's, it's one of the issues that, between individuals.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that.
I apologize for that. But I think we do need to do something. We have a perfect opportunity to have an apartment building, a well-developed place to have this. We had somebody come in to our community, have faith in our abilities to have zoning and planning out there, that said, "We want to have something bigger and better on, on this parcel of property." It was dropped in our lap. The developer has not been underhanded one bit. It's been us that's been dragging our feet. It's been us that's been playing the Charlie Brown pull hook blowout in front of everybody and say, "Oops, sorry, try again," and then get mad at them for going to the county, when that's what the process dictated the developer do, when we screwed up and said no. So, we're still making a mistake. You can blame me for it, but I personally believe we need something bigger and better on the south side, and it's important for our growth and development, for both our city and for our businesses.
So, Ron?
I can be short. I'm just saying that the Housing Authority Detroit Lakes and the city Detroit Lakes itself have just paid for a housing study. And we just started receiving, it's a hundred and sixty-five page study. Can we at least wait before we do anything and finally see what that study says before we go any further on it? Or we paid for the study, and let's see what the study has to say. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Well, we have a motion in a second on the table. I think we've heard of just about everybody tonight, so thank you for all your comments. I'm going to take a roll called vote from the council, and I'll start from my left. Jay?
Can I ask you a clarifying question to the attorney? So, this is amended from last meeting's motion. Does that then turn this into the first reading again, or is this still would be the second reading?
Well, again, the language of the charter is, sorry, get used to the place. The language of the charter is essentially, does it change the purpose? And so, in my view, but if you disagree with, the purpose of the ordinance is for an annexation. And I don't believe that it changes the purpose, but that could be disagreed with.
But with that added ten acres back at RM, then the, the purpose is changed.
No, I think the purpose of the ordinance is annexation.
With the addition. All right. So, this would ultimately be the second reading?
Yes.
Jay, your vote, please.
No.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Yes.
Jackie?
No.
Ron?
No.
Andy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the interim is absent. Motion passes five to three. I'm not so good with my math. Again, thank you for your politeness tonight and for attending. I would encourage the developer to talk more with us, and then we can try to orchestrate some conversation with the neighborhood about possible different location. So, if you could do that, we sure appreciate it. Thank you. Again, thank you for coming. And with that, we go back to the regular agenda. Unless there's anyone else in the audience that has item you'd like adjusted?
I believe five E.
Go ahead, man. Yeah, go ahead.
Present, excuse me. Item five E, consideration of resolution approving variance to allow a twin home, a lot with a width of a hundred and thirty feet instead of required width of a hundred and thirty-five feet at 1481 Michigan Avenue. This was reviewed last night. We had a good presentation, a good discussion around this. The CDC was announced approval on this, as well as the planning commission, so I move it to bring this forward.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion been made, second, to adopt a resolution approving a variance at 1481 Michigan Avenue. Discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, buddy.
CDC last night, a gentleman came in and talked about the property and referenced that Mr. Sherman is a realtor for the property and not an owner. The city attorney's office was going to find an answer to that, which we reportedly addressed it tonight. Isn't it clear?
I was able, I was able to get additional information. The property is owned by Big Wave Ventures LLC, and the partners of that group are Gabriel Line and Jay Sherman.
Thank you for clarifying.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Who opposed that motion? Curious.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move up to item C. Consideration of second reading and adoption of ordinance five twenty-four, rezoning from R4 limited multifamily to RM multifamily resident district at 1510 Randolph Road. CDC discussed this last night. This is also the second reading of this, so we, I would move this forward.
Second. Motion been made, second, to give second reading and adopt ordinance five twenty-four. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I would like to make one comment. We missed Dennis Kepnik last time, and he wanted to make a comment that he was opposed to this with very similar arguments to most of other residents. And I told him I would share that with the council.
And I asked Dennis, I asked several times last meeting if there was anyone that wanted to talk, and they didn't speak until after, so I did apologize to Dennis. So, we have a motion, a second on the table. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Sir, in the back, did you have something you want to adjust it?
I, David, Michigan Avenue.
Oh, that was Michigan Avenue? Okay, all right. Thanks.
Very good. Seeing that we're jumping all over, let's try five D next. Consideration of resolution approving a non-conforming use expansion permit to allow a ten-foot extension to the west side of the garage and extending the breezeway ten feet to the north in line with a five-foot setback on existing house and garage at 1050 Lake Avenue. This was discussed at CDC last night, as well as planning commission with the unanimous, unanimous approval. I so moved.
Second. Motion been made, second, to adopt a resolution approving a non-conforming use expansion permit at 1050 Lake Avenue. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I believe the last item is item five A. Discussion regarding a memo from the city attorney regarding interim use permits. Kelsey, you've got a couple hours to figure this out, so. Kelsey, you've got a couple hours to figure this out, so.
Mayor, council, yes, there's a memo on there from the city attorney. The last CDC meeting, we talked about the possibility of amending our zoning ordinance to allow interim use permits that would allow some temporary uses in our commercial districts. We reviewed that memo at the CDC meeting, I think at this point it's just discussion, there's still more work to do on that. I think the city attorney did a very good job laying out kind of the process that we could adopt for doing interim use permits, I think the bigger question is just where, what kind of interim uses the council and planning commission would actually want to consider, so more discussion is needed on that.
Thank you, Kelsey, as I have heard CDC is, we can't sleep over the next month, hold this out, read it. I think it's some good uses with a lot of question marks in here as well. So, that is just a discussion right there, and mayor, I believe that concluded CDC.
Thank you, we'll move on to the public works committee, Ron, do you have five minutes to do the whole thing?
Well, I would say I'll try to be as long as, well, he wasn't his committee.
All right.
Let's go to item A, we had a discussion regarding handicap parking and fifteen-minute parking and the city engineer reminded us that next spring we're gonna be doing a complete overhaul of that parking lot. So, I think what we're gonna do is just hold off until, because we don't want to tear that thing up after changing anything and do it over again, so that's just for discussion and we'll go, go forward for next spring, get done over the year. Item B is consideration of approving a change order for the library parking lot project. I'm gonna talk, have Kelsey talk to us about what, what that's been involved in.
Mayor and council, so we have in the budget for the library redoing the parking lot as, this year as we redid our west downtown project and redo Frazee Street, we want to also do the parking lot. I'd clearly say that a little bit of a project creep occurred. We were looking at more of a simple resourcing, we had about fifty thousand dollars budgeted. If you look at the quote from Hawe Week, who is actually doing the west downtown project, who provided us with this cost, is eighty-six thousand dollars. That's because the project has evolved quite a bit, we're actually looking at basically full removal of the existing parking lots and recreating, some curb replacement. And probably the bigger item in is some stormwater retention, some underground stormwater retention for treatment. So, we think the price is reasonable based upon where his other bid prices were at. We would recommend approval and then this would be funded through probably a combination of our food and beverage fund and then our apartment improvement fund.
Okay, the committee reviewed this change order and recommend that we do so with the change.
Second. Motion been made second to approve a change order for the library parking lot project, discussion?
One question I have is for the food and beverage, do we have funds available there for eighty-six thousand? I know we're trying to still build that back up from the museum.
Yes, mayor and council, that fund isn't extremely flush with cash, however, because of the timing of some of our projects, it does have some funds in it. Some of the larger trail projects we have that are penciled in haven't quite come to fruition yet, so we'll talk more obviously about that during our budget sessions, but at this point, yes, there are funds available.
Thank you.
And then we have some of the funding will also come from the library fund too, for that purpose.
Thank you.
Further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
What was motion carries?
Peter, next item C is consideration approving the purchase of the new dehumidification system for arena two and I'm gonna call on Sean, do you wanna take that one?
Yes, mayor and council, we have had issues with the dehumidification unit in arena two. This is the quote for that dehumidification unit for a hundred and ninety-two thousand, a hundred and forty-three dollars and it could be done yet this winter.
The committee reviewed this and I so moved, we have that project.
Second. Motion been made second to approve a new dehumidifier for unit, for unit for arena two, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
What was motion carries?
Next item was item D, consideration for resolution accepting report and set a public hearing on the banquet of diseased trees for two thousand twenty-four. Look, as Sean's reported, we have forty-six alien trees that have access to them, so that's what the committee recommends. Committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Motion been made second to adopt a resolution accepting a report and then setting a public hearing for diseased trees for next month, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is item D, this is consideration to approving a cost of participation with MINDOT for intersection studies on highway ten east, or excuse me, on East Shore Drive as well as looking at Highland Drive and also thirty-four. And the cost for this project that MINDOT is gonna do on intersections is gonna cost approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and they're, MINDOT is asking us, us as a city to participate and pay part of that and they would like to have us give them five thousand dollars for this study, the committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Motion been made second to approve the cost participation with MINDOT for intersection study, discussion on the motion?
Hey, with this, I'm, I'm just questioning if we're cost participating, do we get a voice at the table then?
Small one.
That's true.
You know that works, Matt.
Well, I know, but at least I'd rather be at the table.
No, I, I know, but Kelsey has been visiting with him, so that's, that's our voice.
So, John, do you, are you involved with it or not?
Yeah, as much as other city staff, but I mean, to answer Oldman Bokey's question, I mean, it's, this is typical, I guess, of what we've, the arrangement we've had with MINDOT and some past studies that are similar to this. They, they want the local agency to have some skin in this and yes, effectively, we are buying a bit of a seat at the table, so.
Okay, any further questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I've got a couple other items here that you have received here at your desk. This is an application of the annual transit virtual license to receive for the Ofer Sweet, Ofer Sweet ice cream truck that we operate in the city. We recommend approval of this, of this license and I so move.
Second. Motion been made second to approve the annual transit virtual license for Ofer Sweet ice cream truck. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
What was motion carries?
Okay, then I have another item that came in, it's, it's from the fairgrounds, we'll have it there before we know it. Fair dates are August seventh to August tenth this year. And as you know, parking on the side streets and so forth is to be pretty difficult, especially when you have the derbies and all that, and so what they're asking, for years we had parking on both sides of the street, right, right, right around the armory area and they're asking us that if we could put no parking on that area for the day of the fair this August seventh to tenth, so it'd be like seven or eight spots on each side of the road to make that open up to be a little easier for entering and exiting the fairgrounds and the, we had, the lady that's in charge of that area and she just asked if we could do it, we gave it a try this year and no, no hollers for future fair, but the committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made second to approve some no parking zones during the fair, by the fairground entrance. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is, have John Crater, city engineer, give us an updated report.
Mayor and council, another time to report here as far as projects this month. We continue to wrap up a number of projects that just have a few punch list items and we're working on final payments for the Candle Avenue and Lane, Summit Avenue, Terry Street, Andrews subdivision, that project was paved and nearing completion. The twenty twenty-four street rehab project, which is pretty widespread across the, the city, has slowed a bit, the weather's been a bit challenging to say the least, but they're making some headway on that. I'd point out that sort of the second phase of this is probably going to start somewhere around the week of July twenty-second, maybe slightly later than that. That's gonna include work on streets like Eleventh Avenue, West River Road, Garnet, a small portion of Roosevelt, North Shore Drive, a few other small areas. So, you'll start to see some activity towards the end of the month on that remaining portion of the project there. Willow Springs is just about wrapped up, they've got a little bit of a lengthy punch list there to get cleaned up, but by March, the street's paved. West Downtown, they've got the underground done, curb and gutter and street. We actually opened the road temporarily over the Fourth of July weekend and then now closed it again while crews sort of finish up the sidewalk work and things like that on Holmes, but by the later part of this week, maybe early next week, that should be wrapped up. Meanwhile, they're gonna be starting on Frazee Street, at the west end of Frazee Street here at Oak Grove and then heading east on Frazee, and so for the next month, that's where a lot of that work will be taking place. Continue to process contracts with landmark structures on the new water tower. They're still indicating that they may start some work here as soon as August, so a little bit of wait and see on that, but we could see some activity on the new water tower this year. And then the highway ten east sewer water extension, this is the infrastructure project to service the quality equipment development. That project's up for bids, it's open for bids on the sixteenth and those should be on the agenda for the special meeting on the nineteenth, so.
Any questions for John? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the city engineer's report. I would make a motion, we'd accept John's report, and some, second. Motion's been made second to adopt city engineers' monthly report, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're done? Sorry?
We pulled item K off, you said.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, let's, let's go to the item K because here's what's happening on that, I'm sorry about that. You know, the Rotary is, is having, having this event for Oktoberfest and we were gonna do it on Washington Avenue, but our engineer said that that might be in the middle of their doing work on, on some of that street there. So, for that reason, Kelsey Clam, who's part of that Rotary club, said he would get together and talk to the members and he, and he made, and, because we wanted to move to Holmes, but he wanted to make sure that his club was pleased with that and they said Holmes would be great, so I had to make a motion that we go ahead and have Oktoberfest to be held on Holmes Street instead of on Washington Avenue, so.
Second. Motion's been made second to approve the special event application for the Rotary Club on September twenty-first to be held on Holmes Street rather than Washington Avenue, discussion?
I'm assuming that road will be freshly paved and ready to open for this October festival? Okay, good, it's for Rotary.
And I think I get to tap the first cake?
All right.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll do a quick answer on that, I'll take it.
Item seven A, what I'll do is I'll get a motion on the table and then we can have Heidi take a swing at things and then we can box out whatever we wanna do here, but. Item B is consideration for resolution authorizing issuance by the city of its one point three million dollar tax, taxable general obligation municipal airport revenue bond series twenty twenty-four A concurring and the issuance by Echo County of its six hundred and fifty thousand dollar taxable general obligation municipal airport revenue bond series twenty twenty-four A to the city to, to evidence its obligation to the city to pay its proportional share of the cost of the airport project payment of debt service on the city's bond, approving the extension and delivery of the pledge agreement. Finance reviewed this this afternoon, recommends approval, I so move.
Second. Motion's been made second to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of one point three million dollars of general obligation municipal bonds for the airport. Heidi, do you wanna add anything to that?
I do have a very, I do have a very brief presentation together by Doug from Baker Tilly, so I'll just go through that real quick here. So, we did, we did go up for bids on this project, this was something that we did locally through our local banks rather than going through the bond market and, and getting, getting rates that way and going through a rating call and all of that. We did get six different bids back from, from various banks. These bonds are taxable bonds, so they are a little bit different interest rate than the normal city bonds would be. Normally, our bonds are tax, are non-taxable. So, the, the bid results are on the screen. We, we had the, the folks who bid on these bonds give us two different rates, one for a non-callable rate and then a callable option, because we'd like to have the option to potentially call those bonds if possible over the next couple of years, just in case interest rates were to go down or something like that or if we were to find another funding mechanism that would have a more attractive interest rate then we could pay off those bonds early without any penalties and, and rather have just a slightly higher interest rate from the onset. So, this is what we've, we've got for our rates. The lowest callable rate ended up being Midwest Bank here in Detroit Lakes at seven point one eight percent. Again, not a very attractive rate, but that's, that's the best callable rate that we did get from our local banks here. Excuse me?
Hold on, I'll touch you on that, I'm sorry.
Sources and uses of the, of the bonds, one point three million again, used to finance the, the construction of two new six-unit T-hangers out at the airport. They'll be paid back by the proceeds, or the, the revenues from all of the hangars out at the airport. So, definitely able to, to pay back these, these bonds with the existing hangars and those new hangars that are there, even with the interest rate being more than we sort of anticipated. Then this last slide here is just an estimate of looking at a public bond sale, which, you know, is kind of what we normally do versus this sort of local bank call for, for proposals. The onset, there's a lot more closing costs in a public bond sale because you have to have a credit rating agency review and then there are also underwriter fees, but then in return, there is a lower interest rate. The thing with public bond sale, those bonds are not callable for the first eight years, so if we're looking at a ten-year term on these bonds, we wouldn't be able to call them for eight years. So, we're still thinking that this is a better option to go with this, this Midwest Bank callable option. And again, we've, we've kind of already gone through this process, again, this rate isn't exactly attractive, but let's, we're, we're, we're looking at moving forward with this and then should other, other options present themselves, we could certainly pay these bonds off and refinance.
Any questions for Heidi? We do have a motion in a second on the table. If there are no further questions or discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, anything else then?
Nope.
Chairman Spire, is there anything on the public safety that you need to bring forth?
We do not have any items, I'll leave it to the chairman.
We'll go to the liquor gambling control committee and I'm told Walden Stern is gonna take the.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, liquor and gambling, we met the board council and the item on our agenda was the consideration to the request for Noon Rotary to sponsor Oktoberfest. Liquor and gambling, we had discussion on it and we recommend approval of a five hundred dollar gold sponsorship for marketing for the Oktoberfest. The committee, an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made second to approve a five hundred dollar sponsorship for the Noon Rotary Oktoberfest from the liquor front, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
What was motion carries? And also, Mike, is there anything from the public utilities that you need to bring to the council?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Doesn't look like there's anything else on the city administration items, Kelsey, any?
Mayor and council, sorry. Mayor and council, just. Mayor and council, just bring your attention to page five of the agenda, our budget meeting schedule, and the August city council's schedule is a little different, because that Tuesday is the primary election, so we have to move our meeting to Monday. As you can see, we currently have all of our committees also moved to Monday, August twelfth, with the exception of community and development committee would be Thursday, August eighth at five o'clock. The last thing I would add, I mentioned it earlier, we're currently looking at having a special council meeting on July nineteenth, which is a Friday. We're doing noon meeting. Our current agenda items would be the second reading of the cannabis moratorium. We hope to have bids back for the East Highway Ten utility extension project, and we're also open to have bids for the Detroit Mountain Legacy Grant Project for the council to consider at that special meeting.
All right. Kelsey didn't mention that city elections are coming up this November, and the filing opens for Alderman and Mayor positions on July thirtieth, closes August thirteenth. And also, he mentioned our budget committee meetings, and I would like to appoint the finance committee as our budget committee, but certainly those meetings are open to all the council. We posted the city council meetings, so there's other members who can attend. The joint governance meetings for the balance of the year are listed, and as Kelsey mentioned, the council dates are listed with the change in August because of the election. So with that, is there any, Kelsey, you have? Jay?
Nope.
Sean? Mike? You have that?
Of course. Just thank you, Public Works, for the Fourth of July. I know that's very busy, not only for your staff, but also P D. So, thank you for making town look great and rolling over the door, Matt. Thank you.
I just wanna wish that J C's a very successful log parlor. It starts this coming Friday, July twelfth, and it goes all the way through Sunday, the July twenty-fifth, for the big parade, and if you can support the J C, please do so. And if you wanna volunteer, I know we don't accept volunteers.
And maybe we've got enough rain, and they won't get rain though.
That's what I'm saying.
Wendy, anything else?
I would just like to say thank you to Chief Todd and his staff. He did report all of our committee meetings yesterday, that it had been a kind of really family atmosphere. They were busy, but they managed a large crowd of people very well, and I just wanna say thank you to his staff.
One last point for budget meetings. This is where we meet quite a bit in August, and that's where we work and earn our dollars for the year, for our day, so please make an effort to show up and join the process.
All right, the business of this council is coming to a conclusion.